First up is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's get the agenda adopted this evening. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
How about the...
I move a meeting law.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander, did you get that? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, just hang on.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Reports. Dr. Arkonoff.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. This evening, we have a report on teacher evaluation report. This is required by the Department of Education. The board received a report on the teacher evaluation system, and Dr. Jack Parker, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, is going to provide that report for you now.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to provide this great information with you. Our teachers and administrators had a great year last year, working hard, collaborating, and growing together. And I'm excited to share the results from this most recent year rounding evaluation. However, I will share with you that we're not quite done with evaluations because we changed them a bit this year, and I'll explain as we go through tonight. I just want to remind you that there is a formal evaluation process that involves many observations, both formal and informal. Classroom walkthroughs of shorter periods of time, 15-minute and then 45-minute observations. We work really hard to make sure that teachers receive feedback following each of the observations. Now, new teachers will receive six of the shorter visits, two 15-minutes and one 45-minute. Teachers that are below a 3.0 will receive the same. Those with a rating between 3.749, which is effective, will receive three shorter visits, a 15-minute and a 45-minute. And then those that have been rated highly effective in the past will receive three walkthroughs and one 45-minute observation. And the 45-minute observations are scheduled with the teachers. All the other ones are just random pop-ins. We have four domains that we evaluate teachers on: purposeful planning, effective instruction, teacher leadership, and professionalism. And each of those domains are weighted differently. And as you can see, they are weighted 30%, 40%, and then the last two, 15% each. Now, the change this year is, last year, we had the rubric ratings ended up being their evaluation rating. This year, we added an additional component, and that is the school letter grade, that reflected student performance and student growth with their evaluation ratings. Student letter grades, excuse me, school letter grades won't be official until this fall. So like many other schools throughout Indiana, teachers do have their evaluation rubric ratings, but they don't have their final rating until we get official school letter grades back in the fall. And as you can see, we are weighting the entire teacher rubric domain at 95%. And then 5% of that, of course, would be for the school letter grade. There are rubric evaluation conferences. It's completed at the end of the year, where that observation and all of that feedback is reviewed. Teachers provide and share additional artifacts. They have plenty of time to weigh in on whatever area they feel like they need to. I already explained about the 95 and 5% weighting for the rubric rating, as well as the letter grade for the school. Just to put it in perspective, last year, our teacher effective ratings looked much like this. Essentially, 83% highly effective, 15% effective, 2% not rated for multiple reasons. This year, we calculated it slightly different. Now, understand, this says teacher effectiveness ratings. That's because last year, the rubric rating was synonymous with their final rating. This year, it's not synonymous. We still have a little bit of information yet to get. So these are just the rubric ratings, not the final ratings. These are inflated. They're inflated because we added close to 20 teachers in our special education department that came from the co-op, who had been, most of them had been working for Center Grove, excuse me, they had been working in Center Grove for many years and were quite accomplished. And they came in as new teachers this year, and they were rated as new teachers, which changes their evaluation score to be effective or highly effective. So this is a little bit inflated, and we will see how it shakes out when we get the letter grades back. But again, we added quite a few highly experienced teachers to our pool. I also want to share hypothetically, if all schools were to receive an A letter grade, of course, that would bring those scores up. And hypothetically, we would be looking at 87% highly effective and 12% effective. Our next steps for this, of course, we review the survey results with the steering committee. We reformed our teacher evaluation steering committee last year, and we'll look to make changes as necessary. Additionally, we do continue to norm with the administrators. Mrs. Trimble is primarily in charge of facilitating that process with all of us. She does a great job, especially with, she now curates all of those conversations that our administrators have. We have 24 building-level administrators, plus several others that are involved in this process. So it's a great professional development opportunity for us to look at specific areas that we need to come closer together and better rate teachers. And then, of course, buildings develop professional development plans based on the evaluation results and those needs, and they have macro looks at how their building is performing in the specific different domains. So again, I want to thank you for this opportunity. I certainly welcome any questions you have, either tonight or between now and any time before next year.
Can I, I have a couple of questions. I know there was a lot of conversation several years ago about the norming process. Do we, do we have a better process in place with our administrators to train them from a consistency norming perspective? I mean, are the teachers feeling more comfortable about that process?
You know, I couldn't speak to, there's some feedback. Need to move. I couldn't speak to the teacher comfort. I don't hear much about discomfort. I do know that we've always done a pretty decent job with norming, and we really did step it up quite a bit this year, especially the way we are curating all of our conversations about the specific indicators. We look at, so there's the four domains. Within those domains, there's tons of competencies. And with those competencies, there are indicators that kind of describe how you would rate that indicator, which would fill into the competency in the domain. So I think we have indeed done a much better job of archiving and curating those kind of conversations, carrying them forward so they remember what we talk about. But we had a very fruitful training year and norming year with our administrators. Now, I'm excited about this year. We have, right at a third of our building administrators are new to their positions this school year. So they get extra support, of course, and we will work with them very closely, bring them up to speed with all the work that we've done in the recent six years since we've been doing this type of a process, and continue to train them up.
So I'd like to add to that particular subject matter. This is, you know, I know there are teachers that don't think the norming is as good from building to building. So where do the teachers get a chance to put their feedback in as to why they feel that way?
Of course. I will say, all administrators are incredibly open to teacher thoughts and opinions about the specific competencies and how they feel they are demonstrating proficiency in that area. And I know that our principals and assistant principals particularly are very good at providing feedback. And we've had many conversations about, you know, when we're not seeing what, we're always trying to move a teacher up, but when we're not able to, we're always able to provide that specific feedback to the teachers. I would like, for instance, example might be, I would like to think that if you would do this, this, and this as indicated on these indicators, that I would be able to rate you higher on this competency. But we do receive a lot of feedback from our teachers in multiple principal conversations during evaluation conferences.
Is this something, bless you.
Thanks.
Is this something new and/or could that be a discussion topic for discussions at some point in the future?
With UTAC, yes. We have had discussions, then the committee is appointed by, members are appointed by UTAC, if I remember correctly. Is that right?
Correct. And it's a very large teacher evaluation committee that we reformed this year. I will say, I'm delighted with how well we've worked with that committee and how well they've worked together. They actually see some significant changes that they want to make, particularly in Domain Two. And I don't doubt that we will get there. We just ran into a couple of problems with making sure that it was really cut tight and good before we would be able to implement it, but it's been a great committee to work with.
I think the message is, we're, at least two of the board members are still concerned about the norming process. So whatever feedback we can get about that, I think, would be helpful.
And I understand, there is only so much you can do. Whenever there's going to be human involved, there will be differences. Just, you know, we have to be able to show that we've done everything we can, training-wise, that makes all the principals be as normed as possible from building to building.
I ask this simply because I just don't know. Approximately, what's the amount of time that is spent in the evaluation? You know, is it 15 minutes? Is it 20 minutes?
Well, you know, that's a great question. So as part of the evaluation process, there are observations, and then there are a lot of conversations. So if you look at just the observations for a beginning teacher, that's going to be less than two hours a year of observations. But the fact that there's multiple observations is more powerful than going in twice for 60 minutes. You know, being able to pop in and get a quick glimpse of how things are going. So that's just the observation part. The evaluation part, our principals put a lot, and when I say principals, I mean all building administrators, excuse me. They put a lot of time in with their teachers. They offer them meetings to discuss, sometimes spending 60 to 90 minutes per teacher, many times on the weekend, outside of the school hours, to get their feedback and get their artifacts, so they can say, hey, here's how I'm doing in this competency on this domain, and here are some of the artifacts and practices that I use. And then principals always offer them an evaluation conference that is coaching, and they don't finalize their evaluation until a week after that conference, in case there's additional information that teachers want to provide. I think our building-level administrators spend an extraordinary amount of time with their teachers.
Well, my kudos to them, because I realize that it is a tremendous task, if you will, and spending the amount of time even in preparation for those conferences. So my commendations go to the administrators involved in those processes.
And one other, thank you for that. And one other thing to add, all of our administrators do an amazing job of planning an entire year's worth of observations upfront and making sure that they work the plan, and they're very dedicated. For instance, if we're wanting to schedule a meeting with them and they have a 45-minute evaluation, excuse me, observation scheduled, they're likely not going to change because they can't. They're really dedicated to spending time with those teachers.
It's a domino effect.
Yeah, they set that schedule up and they track it all year long and they stay on track, top to bottom. They really do.
Well, then that's respectful to the teachers.
Absolutely.
Real quick, just because I remember this, this is a hybrid situation, isn't it? The, our evaluation system is kind of a hybrid situation. In other words, we didn't do exactly the one the state put out. And in the beginning, the teachers were involved in setting this up, weren't they, in UTAC?
Oh, absolutely. I was, myself, highly involved. I was a chair of the rubric committee many years ago, when the first rubric was drafted. And it was an adaptation of the state model that we went through with a fine-tooth comb and a committee and built that for the first time. It has changed a little bit over the years. In some areas, it's been tweaked. But nothing has been changed without discussion with the association. And of course, when we've had our committee together, they've been a very large part. We, it's not a discussion committee. It's a decision-making committee. And those teachers have made great decisions.
Any other questions for Dr. Parker?
Appreciate it, Dr. Parker, with your updates on this every year.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. There are no public comments regarding agenda items.
Next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. We have a motion and a second. All those, any discussion about the consent agenda? Sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thank you. We may have a few introductions. Do we have any introductions tonight? Some of our new staff. I know this evening, we, who did we have this evening? Oh, there we go. Martha, please stand up. I think we've approved Heather already, but Martha, we've approved Martha this evening at Pleasant Grove as assistant principal. So Martha Anderson will be taking over and working there with Mr. Kelly. So welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
I believe also this evening, we approved one new dean at the high school who couldn't be with us tonight. It's, I believe, is it Teresa Owen? Teresa Owen, who comes to us from Brownsburg. And so she will, she'll be joining us as well.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Action items. Dr. Arkonoff approved the 2018-19 Transportation Handbook.
Thank you. This item was tabled at our last meeting, and we're bringing that back for more discussion. Dr. Long is out for a few days while his son gets married. He couldn't talk him out of it.
You know this is being recorded.
No, I think they're all thrilled, but I better fix that up. But Mr. Peterson is with us this evening, and a couple of bus drivers, I see. So we'll just kind of pick up where we left off. We had a couple of issues to clarify. I believe one was about, if I remember correctly, was about daycare provider clarification of what is a daycare provider. And I believe that clarification was provided on number, item number 19. And what's in bold is the new language to help clarify. So basically, it's anyone the parent tells us is the childcare provider. So if they decide grandma is the childcare provider, then they take it to grandma's house. Item number 19, bottom of that, yeah, right there.
Dr. Arkonoff, I think it's also in number four. It says riding bus only permitted for students with multiple households or childcare provider.
Yes. And that number four is riding another, riding their assigned bus versus number 19 is about daycares, defining daycares.
It defines it in number, can Pam scroll down?
Pam, scroll down to 19 again.
Please. So that's a new provision. Okay, I follow. Thank you.
It's just defining what childcare is.
And I think that was my question, actually. I think Mr. Norman had a different question. So I appreciate the time put into this to clarify that, because I think it'll hopefully make it clear to parents that it doesn't necessarily have to be a, a licensed provider. It can be, as you said, grandma.
Yes. And then item number four was, I believe, Mr. Norman's question. Is that correct? So the language of clarity there was about, I believe it was riding another bus. Is that correct?
Emergency.
No, it was about riding another bus coupled with emergency.
With emergency.
Correct, because that wasn't in there.
Okay. It's good now. Okay.
Yeah, my only concern was that there wasn't some mechanism, because many of our staff, which is great, are very legalistic. If it doesn't say it, I'm not doing it. So that was my, I just wanted there to be an option.
They're rule followers.
Which is not a bad thing, because I like rules. I just want, I just want to make sure that everyone's needs are satisfied. And this seems like a good middle-of-the-row compromise. It leaves the door open for that. And also, I would say, I think that maybe seeing how this goes, maybe actually talking to staff, seeing how this whole thing with emergency goes, because I know one concerned by Dr. Long was abuse, and maybe revisiting it, maybe if there's some big issue with it. But I don't think there will be, frankly. But if there is, I think, bring it to us.
Absolutely. I was talking with Mr. Peterson today, and we talked about this, their ability to take care of needs of our parents and students. They really do a pretty good job of that, but they do monitor that as well.
Sure. And just to be clear, I never questioned whether the bus transportation ever did that. I know they do. My kids wouldn't be riding the bus if they didn't. So I know that. My question is about how there's no mechanism open for, basically, the office staff at the schools and being like, no. If it doesn't say it, no. That was my issue. Not ever with the transportation department, ever.
And I also like in here the way the change was made to put out there that they must be notified no later than 2:00 PM. Hopefully, that will help our schools so they can make a decision. You know, it says right here. I just think we need to make sure we get this out to the parents, so the parents know that there is a time that they need to say something. If not, you know, we can't be shuffling around at the last minute. So I applaud both changes, the one to the childcare definition and then the second, giving a compromise with a time limitation, saying, tell us before 2:00 PM.
And to Mr. Daniel's point, I would encourage the principals to make sure this specific part that we're talking about is communicated to the parents right now. I'm getting inundated with elementary school stuff right now, which is awesome. This is a time to tell everyone these changes. So I think that's the whole problem. If we don't, we say, oh, what's in there? That causes a lot of problems and just send in a little bit of anger. So if you communicate it, we can go from there.
Yeah.
I would encourage principals to make sure they're doing this when they, with their.
Mrs. Timmy.
That was, that was my question. You really have kind of answered it. I wanted to make sure that there's some specific venue or procedure that every parent who has a child riding bus, that they know what the rules are, so that there's no surprises when there has to be a decision made, either positive or negative. So I'm sure you'll take care of that, but I just, I just wanted to say that. I want to make sure that some kind of, maybe it's a pamphlet, or maybe it's, I don't know what, but just so that everyone's informed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for your time on this. It gives us a lot of clarity.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Transportation Handbook changes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Tim. Any further questions or discussion?
I'll give it a third. How's that?
All right. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Dr. Arkonoff, approve student handbook revision at the high school.
Thank you. This evening, I'm recommending that the board approve the revisions to the high school student handbook. And Mrs. Jennifer Perkins, high school assistant principal, will be providing some information. So if you want to come on up and... Okay, both of you. There we go. All right.
Are you going to say every other word? That would be impressive.
I like that challenge.
Is this the phone a friend?
So we talked at our administrative retreat that the current policy and wording that was put in the handbook was causing conflict because we weren't pulling credits from kids when they hit a seven-day max. So we'd like to change, and plus the deal, we said you cannot offer, you cannot use a disciplinary consequence to punish someone for academic reasons. So we would like to change it so that it just says that we refer to juvenile probation. They can lose their work permit and their driver's license.
And this was mostly confusing for our teachers, who become frustrated when students are absent for several days. And they're wanting to know, why aren't we pulling credit? And we would rather approach it in a manner in which we can hopefully try to save the student's credit. And by removing that language, it just removes the confusion. Our goal is to make sure that grades reflect learning and that the credit is therefore rewarded for the grade versus pulling credit for a student. Oftentimes, there are many reasons why students may be absent more than seven days, and they may be doing just fine in the course. So we wouldn't want to be punitive in that measure, simply for an extended amount of absences. In most cases, if a student's absent several days, that's reflected in the grade. But we feel this would be most fair and also supports the rationale that we've received from our lawyers in regards to the consequences that may occur if we tend to pull credit based off of a grade.
And it's about changing behavior, not issuing a punitive, something punitive that would keep someone from graduating. It's about encouraging them to come to school. And if you pull the credit at seven, what incentive do I have to change my behavior? I don't have any. So it's about trying to change behavior, not punishing them and keeping them from being academically successful.
Well, can, can, did the attorney sign off that we can actually revoke their driver's license?
The juvenile will do that. Juvenile probation.
It kind of reads that the school will refer them to juvenile probation, then the school may have their DL and work permit revoked. The way it reads, it makes it sound like these three actions are taken by the school, not that you refer the juvenile probation, juvenile probation.
It may do the other. It kind of reads, I...
It implies that we might do it?
Yeah, it does have a...
We're going to let you be in charge of that one.
We, as a school, can revoke a driver's license and a work permit. There's a form that we can do. We don't have to do it through probation. We can do it ourselves.
Oh, we can?
Yes, we have not done that.
Really?
In my, in my former life, I have done.
That wasn't there, that wasn't there when I was in high school. I hope so. You would have lost it many times. Woof, no kidding.
Thank you. Good to know.
I want to tell my kids this.
And if you do it, it goes super quick.
So this language actually is correct, and the implication is correct, is what you're saying.
I have a question about, this doesn't stop the teacher, though. A kid misses seven days and does not get some of the work done. The teachers can still mark the student down.
Absolutely.
It doesn't interfere with the teacher grading the student.
No, it does not interfere with that.
It's just a natural tool for them. Okay.
Does that even want to tie the ammunition of the teachers along with?
Any other comments or questions?
I'm so surprised.
You got out of school at a very good time.
I think he's thinking of ammunition when his child wants to stay home from school now.
I mean, I could be Tuxley right now.
Now, you can use that, exactly.
All right.
But you'll use it on your children.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the high school student handbook revision as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thank you, ladies.
I don't know why we're having...
She's trying to turn it down.
All right. Next up is approve support staff handbook, Dr. Arkonoff.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. This evening, I am recommending that the board approve the support staff handbook as presented. And Mrs. Nora Hoover, executive director of Human Resources, will provide you with some additional information.
Hello. This is an annual event about every time this year.
Hello. This is an annual event about every time this year. But we want to have this in people's hands and ready to go on the first day. So I'm going to go through pretty quickly the recommended changes. Please ignore the table of contents in the final, in the draft document you have, because those will need to change once all the additions are made. But the following are just a summary of the changes that actually have content. We changed lots of dates and things, but these are things that change content. Page six, we just updated all the title positions. Page eleven, we added wording from the board policy to clearly define the role and responsibility of CG employees reporting suspected cases of child abuse. And that has been a change at the state level and some definitions of what the timeline should be. And so we wanted to make sure that was very accurate in our staff handbook. On page twelve, we added vaping to the list of prohibited actions for employees on school property, along with tobacco and other smoking products listed. This reflects what we expect of students, and it's part of being a tobacco-free campus.
I don't mean to interrupt, because I...
Sure.
Mr. Norman, actually, and I are talking about through this, and when we say vaping, does that include jewels? Or should we, you know, the little portable vaping devices?
It's a vaping device, so yes.
I understand. But so are we comfortable that's clear enough to cover both?
That word is all encompassing.
That's the same word we used in the high school, and if they had a jewel, it would count, yes.
As vaping. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Eighteen, we revise our weather, emergency, closing, and delays to match some guidance that we gave our support staff last year, and actually our certified staff, too, because it had been a little unclear. And year to year, there were a lot of questions. And so we did a lot of searching to make sure everything we did was legal when it comes to hourly versus our salaried exempt employees. And so we just matched that guidance with the definitions we put to it last year in the practices.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
I know that one of the questions was unsafe roads, but yet we were telling hourly, they still had to come in to get paid. Is that still...
What we did is, because they had a couple of choices, they could either take time and get paid, they could come in on time and report to work as necessary, or if they, some people are out of time, they don't have personal time left in that crazy March snow delay.
Right.
And so what we did is we added another option, which was a lost time where they put in as the reason inclement weather. We understand unsafe roads or childcare are different things. And we would not hold lost time for inclement weather against them in a evaluative form. And so we wanted to make sure that option was there. It's not pay.
I was going to say, they never get a chance to make up lost time, though, do they? And they're an hourly person.
Right, right.
I don't know how we could, but...
But we can't pay people who aren't working, just like we can't not pay people who worked extra. It's just legal. But they can use comp time. If they had comp time, they could use it there, yeah. So they, it gives them a layer of options people did not feel like they had before. And lets them be the judge for their own safety on whether they think it's safe to come or not. On page thirty-three, we revised the wording to mere legal standards for overtime and compensatory guidelines and policies. There was some wording in there that sounded like, maybe we'll pay you? And we don't have a choice about maybe paying people who work, even if not approved to work by a supervisor. We can't not pay them if they worked. And it wasn't very clear. So we wanted to make that very clear. If people work without, extra without permission, that's a different matter than not paying them. So we made that language clear. And then on page forty, we added wording to reflect the current practice on retirement benefits for our support staff, Level B and C, and what insurances they will qualify to take through us, through the time that they can get Medicare. And that's actually just current practice. It just wasn't, again, it just wasn't clear in the handbook. And whenever you can clear it up, you need to clear it up. So the support staff handbook is available to all our staff via the corporation website on our Human Resources page. Additionally, each employee is also given a login to our Safe Schools platform, and they're asked to review that handbook and confirm electronically that they understand that it's their duty to know and understand that those practices in there. Additionally, for new employees, the principal or their supervisor must sign off at their probationary period that they have talked with the employee about the electronic handbook, and the person knows that they have that availability to them.
Which, that may be a silly question, but we expect our students to sign off that they have looked through the handbook. Do the employees have to sign that they have looked through it?
Through the Safe Schools, we used to do it through Skyward, and now we have a program called Safe Schools, which has a lot better functionality and does a lot more than just the handbook. And they do, they electronically sign off that they have reviewed that.
Is there a timeframe that this has to be done by the end of October, every school year, or department heads have to go chase them down?
We typically, once we push it out, we give them a deadline, please do it by then. Then we track who hasn't done it and continue to follow up with them until they do it. It's tough. A lot of our jobs don't have easy access. I sit at a desk with email all day. That's not a lot of people's jobs. So we just continue to work with them and their supervisors to get those things signed off on, just like bloodborne pathogens.
They can get a printed copy, though, if they want it.
Absolutely. Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Norman. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Arkonoff, approve the statement of benefits and compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. This evening, I'm recommending the board approve the statement of benefits and compensation for non-teaching staff. And Mrs. Hoover will provide you with some additional information.
These two go hand in hand in many ways. The recommended revisions for the statement of benefits are included and up there for your review. These, the changes for this year include, in Levels A and B, we updated a lot of job titles that have changed in the last year, and those, most of them went through the personnel reports. You're already aware, it's just up to date. On Level C benefits, we updated leave days to match handbook language, to make sure that those were similar. Sometimes, that doesn't always happen. And on Level B, in the compensation area, we changed our maintenance employees' probationary period to sixty days to match the current practice for other employees. It had been six months, and we were having a much different standard for our one group of employees, which we should not do. And so we worked with Mr. Thompson, and we changed that to sixty days. We updated secretarial and office employees whose pay had shifted from salaried to exempt following the FLSA guidelines. We added school safety officer positions under the safety and security employees. We updated the special services employees to add a transition coach for the high school eighteen to twenty-two program that will be a big focus this year on some way we can provide some great service to the students here that are there in that, here in that age group. We updated that technology employees pay from hourly to salary to make some exempt positions, again, following FLSA guidelines. And we updated the certifications to match the handbook. There were just some differences, and so that all matches now. And we added additional worker types under Level D employees in order to cover temporary summer employees. We really hadn't had those listed in our Level D before, and so we wanted to make sure that was very clear and in there. And the statement of benefits and compensation outlines all of our internal procedures. This provides Human Resources and the business office benefits and compensation information for all employees who are not falling under the master teacher contract. Any questions?
Yes. I probably should know this, but could you confirm for me what a transition coach is?
Sure. We have, our special education students, many of them go to school beyond that typical eighteen-year graduation date. And so we have programming for them up through the age of twenty-two, and some of our students stay here that long. And so we need to do some different things for those students and start giving them some job experiences. We had done that through Inspire, which is a program through Earlywood and Franklin College. And we've decided to take that on ourselves. And Ally Chance has worked a lot on that program, and we have some partnerships. And our students are going to be working with this transition coach, who will be out with them on some real-world job experiences.
Right, thank you.
Hasn't there been some state laws changed that beefed that program up? Is why we're doing more of that? Yeah, I guess.
Not really.
Okay.
Not really in alignment with that, just additional services that we can provide outside of the high school to get them a little more prepared for going out into the workforce.
I didn't realize we were pulling out Inspire.
And this is a place...
The Inspire program I liked.
There are some aspects of that, and a lot of that, I think, we want to model. Some things we're doing, there were some great things about Inspire. And we would like to model a lot of those, but we have a lot of those students here. And the cost for us sending kids there was...
Yeah, that was the problem. Transportation was a problem for all the schools.
And we want to, we really feel like with this position, working in conjunction with one of our teachers at the high school, we'll provide the services for these students that will match what they're doing in Franklin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments from the... All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the statement of benefits and compensation as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. See, and I have a motion. I think we got all our discussion out of the way. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business or board member updates, Mr. Norman? All good at C nine?
Yeah. Yeah. Actually, yeah, it is, just, we're going to have some changes. The person here, Bea, is not running from Whiteland. She has done, she's been on board for eight years.
She's been there a while, yeah.
Yeah, she's been there a long time.
Apparently, it's going to be quite a contentious board race in the Park Pleasant over a few issues she was telling me about. So there's a few of us on the board there of C nine, but it's really pretty uneventful.
As I understood it from Dr. Gabriel, we have increased enrollment in Central Nine this year.
Yes, we do. It looks like in the neighborhood of twenty percent increase in students going to C nine.
Yeah, it's been a dramatic increase, especially because I've got some historical data we don't ask for that in the whole.
Right.
Which is frankly, the way, I know there's other consequences and ramifications of that enrollment, but it's about the kids and what they're really doing, what they need. And that's a positive for me. And Centennial, we still need to be a leader in this area, especially the community and county. And I think that's what we're doing.
I agree.
Well, and I'd like to add, you just said, community. It's the first sign to me that there's starting to be that understanding, it's okay to go technical and not four-year. I think that might be a little bit.
I think we can do way more. And this, we have, there's a review process at C nine Dell for some group, and one of our goals is going to be to challenge Mrs. Adi to do way more in marketing, outreach, and community, just knowledge of the program. So similarly, with Dr. Arkonoff in there, we challenge Dr. Arkonoff, he needs to become more involved in the community, which he's done in states. We're challenging Mrs. Adi to do the same. The name needs to be associated with you. You need to get out there so people know this is here, it's not, it is out there. So that's going to be a big push for the board this next school year, getting that through C nine. It's going to be able to change the culture of how they do things there a little bit, because I think they're a little more insular than being extroverted in that way. And I think we're going to push on that pretty hard. And all the board members from all the districts are completely a hundred percent behind that. We talk about every single thing we need now.
Well, we need to remember what a great place Central Nine is, what a great venue that we have at our disposal for the selections things and the world of those students who don't want to go to a four-year college. And a lot of times, those classes that they take, and if they graduate from Central Nine, they may get an internship. And many, many times, those internships become permanent positions.
I have a student, he had from all the schools that presented, but I have not been impressed with this that presented to the board, the types of opportunities they have through C nine, the competitions and scholarships, full rides.
That's right.
Whether it's Vincennes or Lincoln Tech or other places, is frankly breathtaking. I'll be honest with you. It was just something I was not, I mean, it's just so impressive to me. And my hope, and I've talked to the board about this privately, but also to Dr. Arkonoff, is that I really want our schools to serve their own, starting even in middle schools, with counselors and our counselors at high school, being themselves educated. I think a lot of them might not know all of the, how robust it is in this path, and to really present this path going forward. As not, I don't like to use the word alternative. I don't like the word, it's a path.
It's a path.
I guess to me, because I think when you say alternative, it makes it a little bit lesser. And I think it's not lesser. And so the things are going well. We got employment issues, because it's hard, because it pays less. And if someone, if they're working in a collision shop, they want to make more in a collision shop, they need a teacher at C nine in auto collision. So it's a challenge there. So that's the other initiative that we're pushing for, Mrs. Adi, quality of candidate and the recruiting ability as well. So to me, that all goes hand in hand with, we do that, more people be attracted to it, as someone they see as a quality school for their kids to go to. So I mean, it's just kind of look everyone outside of that, so.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Norman. Anything, Mr. Daniels?
No updates this month, Mr. Alexander.
Mrs. Timmy?
I do not have anything to say right now. Right now.
Maybe in a minute.
I was going to say, that's a first.
It's a first that neither one of us have.
That's true, that's true.
I like how she said it, though.
But I do, of course.
So, Mr. Russell, I'll give you Mrs. Timmy's time.
Fast Track is the Saturday at Middle School North. It's a great program, nine to eleven, something like that.
I believe that's...
I believe it's nine to eleven.
And I mean, we run a lot of kids through there in a short amount of time. They have it so well organized. Foundation news, just, Mrs. Rayco is here tonight, but she is attending a two-day training conference, and she said that she's learning wonderful things to bring back to our foundation. And kudos to her for going. The alumni, we have been kind of meeting here. On kind of a side note, there is a CG all-years reunion July twenty-eighth at Monkey Ducks. I just want to make the point that that is not sponsored by Centennial alumni. What it is, is somewhere three, four years ago, a handful of kids started it from the eighties classes. And it was like, you know, the first
Eighties class.
Five years of the eighties of that decade. And then they kind of said, well, why should it just be for everybody? My concern, just so I have this said, this could be the year where a whole lot of people show up in a small venue. So we'll see how it goes. But I did want, we are not sponsoring this, even though it's an all-years Centennial reunion situation. So hopefully, in the future, can work with them.
At Jack's house?
Well, actually, I have a big party house now, so, in a pool, where I live.
All right. Mr. Russell, anything else?
That's it.
All right. I don't have anything else.
Yeah, July twentieth.
Either. Announcements, the first day is Mr. Arkonoff's favorite day of the year.
I love it.
All right, Dr. Arkonoff, August the second is the first day of school.
I'm ready.
How about that? Our next...
What summer?
Our next regular board meeting is August the sixteenth, and at seven p.m. We're adjourned.